I call to order the meeting in Monday, June 13th. If the clerk would please take the roll.
Councilmember Amos.
President.
Councilmember Archibald.
Here.
Councilmember Ashford.
President.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
Mayor Rep.
Here. You have before you the minutes from the regular meeting of May 23rd. Is there a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Amos, is there any additions or deletions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes will stand as submitted. Before we get into the regular agenda, I just, I want to mention, because we just came from the Spirit of Port Huron Awards at McMorn, and I just think it's important that we mention, we had a wonderful turnout there tonight and some great recipients, so I would like to mention those people publicly. We had Brotherhood, Jane Howard, Civic, John and Ann Kendrick, Cultural, Patricia Moss, Economic Progress, Casey and Carrie Harris for Casey's Pizza and Subs, Good Neighbor, Gail Silvernail, Lifetime Achievement, Marcia Haynes, Ancestor Gloria Koharnan, and Youth Service, Kaitlin Mathers and Nathaniel Rogan. It was a great turnout, probably the biggest we've ever had at one of those, so I congratulate all of the recipients, and we look forward to more in the future. I also was remiss and did not thank the city clerk staff. I meant to do that, and I closed it before I did. They put a lot of work into putting together the booklets and sending out the letters, so thank you, Sue, and thank you to your staff for doing that. And we will move on. Public comment is the next thing. If there's anybody in the audience who wishes to address the council, please come forward, give us your name, and you have four minutes.
I'll try to take less than two. Good evening. My name's Matt Muxlow. I'm a resident of Brown City, and I'm a candidate for state representative. I wanted to introduce myself, tell you a little bit about myself real quick. I'm a graduate of Michigan State University, also Thomas M. Cooley Law School. I've spent 13 years of my working career as a chief of staff and legislative aide in the Michigan Legislature. We face a lot of challenges, a lot of challenges that'll need creative solutions. With term limits being the way they are, very short, it's imperative that you have leadership on day one that can hit the ground running. It's a tough learning curve. I've been there, I've been on the front lines. I'm supportive of municipalities. My last working job has been with a state representative from Downriver. We chair the Financial Liability Committee, which deals with pension issues, financial liability facing our municipalities. So, I'm very well aware of many of those issues that face our cities and our townships in the state, and I look forward to working with you folks in the future, and I'll stick around for a few minutes if you want the chat after the meeting, I'd be happy to talk to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to address the council this evening?
Been almost 20 years since I had this podium. Ed Wechler, 3123 Forest Street. I came here to disrupt your meeting because I know from previous involvements that you guys are overpaid, department heads are overpaid in criticism, and the purpose for my visit tonight was a thank you for this past weekend. I extended a thanks to Ed Brennan for inviting me to a department head meeting last week relative to the Back to the Bricks Saturday, to Chief Reeves, who's probably gonna say, "No, no, it's okay, don't say anything." Lenny, who will remember my name when I remember his last name. David Ains, also the council members who took the time out of their really busy schedules to attend what could have been a potential disaster this past weekend, but our city shined. We had some logistical problems, things that can be worked out, but we had a lot of good feedback. It takes an awful lot to comply with the requests when the Back to the Bricks Committee, who doesn't, who don't have any local correspondence here or connections, when they put forth a list of requirements that the whole city must meet across the board that are non-negotiable. This is the second time that we have hosted them. The potential for this event, for this community, is huge, although you may not have seen it this past weekend, but the people who were on our side of the committee, Kevin Rice, Larry Benatow, Gary Neiver, Rick Hanselman, Mary Taylor from Council on Aging, Ron Stewart, Jim Moore, and Craig Albert, I'm here to represent them all. God love you guys, department heads, thank you for saving our fanny. And Nancy, I don't know what we would have done at McMorn without you, and Rob Burchill, and Tyler, I don't believe his name was, but you guys deserve a huge thanks for helping make it happen, and you can go back to your regular input of criticism, but...
Thank you, Ed. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak to the council?
Scott Richard Warden, 412 Grand River Port Huron, and following up, there's, give me no criticism followed up, so we'll leave it to the next one. Since you had the meeting, it's been a couple weeks now, I just want to say that, back to the Feast of St. Clair and then Memorial Day Parade, I thought was outstanding, beautiful weather, and as my, both of my grandfathers, both were in, on both sides of the family, were World War II vets, to see that we have that Memorial Day Parade right downtown Port Huron, and I do hope that we continue to grow it, because so many people are out of town and doing things, but right here, it was a great turnout, the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, we had a, we had a good, the Veterans of Foreign War, so I think it's something that we can continue to build on. Police escort as well, it was nice to have them involved, even Sheriff Donilon was there, and I do, wouldn't mind seeing if we could get some of the old, at least a couple of the old fire trucks at least in there to represent, because I know, I don't know if it's regarding Memorial Day, but they are, they are public safety, and they put their lives on the line all the time. It'd be nice for the kids, too, to maybe throw one of them in there, and, you know, maybe shoot, if it's too hot like it is, maybe shoot off the, shoot off a hose or something, but I thought that was great. This last week as well, we had that nice art festival downtown with music, and again, this Back to the, it's called Back to the Bricks, but also to have some type of a car show, or at least car presence back down in Port Huron, it's part of our history, so I think that's something that was nice to see, and actually, again, something to continue to build on as they go to these other places in Fort Grass and other areas, but Port Huron's kind of the heart, I believe it's the heart, and I think it's a great setup with our downtown community. It's perfect to have something like that, to draw some people in and give them something else to do. The last thing that I have is, that, again, I just went over to that Spirit of Port Huron Awards in McMorn Lounge, it was a great turnout, I thought, all the city council members and Pauline Rep, I thought you guys did a great job of introducing, and, again, Sue Child for putting this program together, it was nice to have such nice recognition across the all, for, very, very positive, very positive thing for the, for the city to have. Besides that, I just wanted to make sure I gave my two cents, three cents worth of that, constantly building on the positives in Port Huron. There's great people in the community. They say over there, a lot of the different speeches that the recipient said, it's about love, it's about uniting and reuniting and making sure you look out for others, that's the strong core fabric, and we need to also make sure that we continually keep that as we're making some of these tough decisions or some of these things come up. Look out for everybody, look at all the hard work that we've built into the city for this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council this evening? I see we have a couple of Boy Scouts out there. Are you working on a badge, Isetta? Would you like to come and tell us what troop you're from?
We're both from Troop 104. We're working on citizenship in the community and communication, both require us to be at this meeting.
And your names?
Max McCleone, Ryan McCleone.
What was, I'm sorry, yeah, I couldn't hear, I heard yours, but...
Yeah, he's Ryan McCleone, I'm Max McCleone.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you for coming and introducing yourselves. I didn't see anybody else who wished to address the council, so I will close the public comment period. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to receive and file? Or for, a motion to adopt? Yeah. Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Four.
Councilmember Ashford.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
Could we take Resolution Six up with consent, please?
Number six.
Yeah.
Okay, sure can. We will take the vote, minus Resolution Six.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. The items adopted were authorized in the levy of the authority tax rate for the Blue Water Area Transportation Commission as authorized by the voters on May 3, 2016, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016. Scheduling public hearings for June 27, 2016, to hear comments from persons on the maintenance costs of both the Huron Avenue Streetscape project and the Military Street Streetscape project, and approving the various resolutions for declaration of and preparation of a special assessment rule and other matters associated with the special assessment districts. And we will move then to item one under resolutions. Is there a motion? Or, wait, I'll let the clerk read it first. I'm moving right along tonight.
Authorizing 13 payments.
Is there a motion? So moved. Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Amos, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Harris.
I just have a couple of quick questions here. Under the, item number one, under the payments for Tetra Tech, and it lists a project of the PPC investigation for the Nern Street project. And I know the Nern Street, Nern Street project is supposed to be finished, and I just wonder what application that we took to incur this expense.
Sir, could you reiterate your question, please?
It was, it was under Tetra Tech's bill, and it was for...
Item number one.
PPC investigation for the Nern Street project.
Is it item number one?
It was item number one.
Right, okay.
Tetra Tech was the, was the firm, and it was, one of their items that they itemized was a PPC investigation for the Nern Street project.
It's $3,070, is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah.
One of the things that we're required to do as part of our project certification is to review the fact that we are meeting performance standards for the flow that is properly separated, and there is connection between the inlets and the outlets and the flow pipes for the drainage, and that's what they were doing. They were doing the performance testing for the sewer system to make sure that it met the flow standards required by the state.
So nothing broke?
No, that, that's part of the certification process for the project as part of the after-action, is what that is.
Did you have another one, too?
And one, one other question I got here, and I guess it's more to find out who's responsible. We have a change order for $7,835.34 to Superior Contracting, and I just wondered, is that gonna be paid with grant money, or are we gonna pay that ourselves, beans it was Lakeside
Which item was it? Item what?
One dash five, Superior Contracting.
Okay.
At Lakeside.
And the change order was $7,835.
That's probably under Nancy's jurisdiction, right?
The change order of $7,835 included a number of items that were final changes, deducts and adds. There's a change order in detail of 13 different items that were included. We eliminated some items, we added some major items that were a problem where we had to change the footing sizes because of water levels, the groundwater levels were higher than the original design had anticipated. We added concrete benches for, well, concrete paths for benches in the police station, that was a request from the Parks Department, added another $2,500. Things, things of that nature. I'd be happy to review these items in detail if you'd like, but the total was a change order to make the splash pad come out in accordance with what the city would like.
Okay. I guess my final question is, does, does the grant money pay for this, or are we gonna pay for it?
Part of the change order was for the concrete benches, those were paid for through donations, through the benches. There was a couple costs that weren't at because it was for the, when we brought in the police station, but I think it was like $2,500 of it that wasn't covered in that, but that was, we could bring in, move the building from downtown and use it as security down there, so...
Perfect fit.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions regarding the payments? We will take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Item two, please.
Is accepting the $12,500 donation from the Port Huron Rotary Club to be applied towards funding of a picnic shelter near the splash pad in Lakeside Park, and accepting the gift of a wheel-like structure representing the Rotary Seal.
Do we have a motion? So moved. Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there any questions or discussion?
I don't have any. Mayor Rep?
Yes.
I don't have any question or discussion, but I think this is a fine thing that the Port Huron Rotary Club is doing, and how everybody's just kicking in and supporting the efforts of a greater effort that's leading to, you know, the betterment of all of the citizens and people coming in, so I think it's, it's, it's great.
I agree.
I agree.
We do appreciate that donation. Yes. If you want to just, for the audience, let us, your name and the record and...
There's a lot of my fellow Rotarians up there.
Yeah, there you go.
Out here. First of all, I wanted to acknowledge Nancy and James for the support they've given us on this endeavor. This book is a history of five years of work, working with another facility to put in a rotary-type legacy, and as of the end of May, that was no longer. So, from the end of May until where we are today, we will have a dedication on Thursday with your approval tonight. This, this dedication will show a 48-inch rotary wheel encased in, in a colored cement, along with a plaque in the names of Dr. Robert Coulter, there's the, that's the wheel right there, that's not the, that's not how we're gonna place it, and a plaque is going to be in recognition of two of our former Rotarians who have passed away in this past year, Robert Coulter and Lee Hanson, who are former district governors, which is a big deal in rotary. And we wanted to do something for this, and we found the perfect spot. And we will be having a celebration at 10:45 on Thursday down at the Lakeside, and we're also very pleased that, this says we're gonna be giving $12,500, it's gonna be closer to $14,000, because the mason is doing the work cheaper than we thought. So our total gift is, if you want to call it a gift, is, is gonna be about $25,000. And we're very pleased with what the parks look like, what it's aspiring to be, and, and I had one of our members said, "Well, why didn't you put it down in Pine Grove?" I said, "Well, we never considered Pine Grove," but she said, "But it's not safe down there." Or, "Not safe up at, up at the Lakeside." I said, "Have you seen the police station up there yet?" In fact, I thought I saw Chief Reeves out there running around the beach, but in any event, we couldn't figure, we couldn't get a better place for this, and I think Nancy might even be showing you, or she already did, a picture of that pavilion, and we're really excited about that. That's about 24 by 24, so that'll make a nice addition, and it's right within the throes of the, of the water park as well as, as our monuments. So, thank you very much for your consideration.
Well, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
If I could also add, in addition to this wonderful donation that Rotary has done, Rotary also puts out the flags on veterans' graves for Memorial Day, and that takes a lot of work and very time consuming, they have volunteers that do that, so they do a lot for our community, we thank you for that.
Thank you.
Pauline, I think with that, I think I, I saw our city clerk over there putting out a flag. Is that you, Sue?
Yep, I think she has.
Yeah, I saw her, yeah. Okay. Nice job.
We will take the vote.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
Item three.
Is approving the agreement with Plant &amp; Moran, PLLC, Certified Public Accountants, to conduct the audit for three fiscal years.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support. Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, supported by Councilmember Ashford. Is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Harris.
I guess my, my comment would be more that I'd rather have seen this come from the administration with a recommendation to put out an RFP for the three-year services. And the other, the other issue I guess I had with this, because we have certified public accountant firms in the city of Port Huron that, that could adequately handle it, and I think that it behooves us, according to the charter, to give this, these same people a chance to bid on our annual audit. The other issue that I had with, with this was on, under item nine, this resolution basically says it's a three-year agreement, but if you look to item nine, it says the contract may be extended solely by the city's option an additional three-year period, with the mutually agreed rates charges to be determined at that time. So I guess basically what I'm trying to say is, is I'd just like to see us give local CPA companies the same chance to...
I think Mr. Brennan's gonna respond to that.
Yes, Mayor and Council, three years ago, we did, in 2013, we, we took proposals from qualified firms. The council at that time decided that Plant &amp; Moran was the highest and best qualified to continue to do our audit. We have gone out for RFPs, starting with them in 2001, 2007, 2013. We've always had, asked them for a, a three-year extension clause, if you will. The, the extension clause that's in there, and this year, would be totally up to the council in three years, whether or not they wanted to, to go forward or go in a different direction, so that's something that's just in there, we can sort of take it or leave it, it's just sort of in there at our, at our own request, however we want to go forward with it.
Did you have any local firms respond back when you had the last...
Well, we did not, we did not take RFPs this year.
No, but when you last time.
Oh, yes, we did.
You did?
We did, yes.
Is there any other questions for Mr. Brennan?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Ashford.
Can you tell us the benefits of, of why you selected that?
Sure. Just going over a few of them, they do, Plant &amp; Moran does more governmental audits than any other accounting firm in Michigan. They're second in the number of nationwide federal programs that they audit each year. They, as you know, we've been a major recipient of SRF and DWRF financing, and those are continued to be audited, even though we may not be borrowing anymore, those are still subject to audit until the loans are all paid off. So, they are experts in that area. As you know, we've received the GFPA Certificate of Achievement for the most consecutive years of any unit of government in Michigan, and I think it's extremely important that, that someone with their knowledge and expertise continue to oversee that. I think it assists us in our bond ratings, if, we're probably going to do more borrowings for water and wastewater projects, so it should help us with our bond rating, our interest rates. Our audit partner, Joe Heffernan, is a nationally recognized speaker and governmental accounting expert. He's chaired the MGFOA Accounting Standards Committee since 1991, and he's developed and presented several, many training sessions over his career, and as you know, the GASB is continuing to come out with new pronouncements. The major one that we just had was for the unfunded pension liabilities. In two years, the unfunded OPEB liability is going to, is going to kick into effect. So, they're experts on all that sort of thing, and, you know, to be able to use their expertise. The other thing they give us is free access to all of their webinars, and I've used their webinars, Julie Davis, our HR director, has used their webinars on healthcare, healthcare matters and health reform matters, and we just think they have the expertise to, to continue to do a fine job in our audit, so that's why we're recommending we go forward with them.
So there's a quality of, of, just a quality period as far as the reach?
Yes. In my opinion, they're probably the most qualified firm in the state, so...
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Rep.
Do you have a question?
Ed, compared to the local certified public accounts that applied, I'm assuming Plant &amp; Moran was close or probably cheaper than most, because that's what they do specialize in?
Yeah, they were, they weren't the lowest, but they weren't the highest, they were sort of in the middle of the pack, so, yes.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
There's nothing else, we will take the vote.
Councilmember Harris.
No.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
Item four, please.
Is approving the agreement with Tetra Tech of Michigan PC for the engineering coordination and administration of the city's utilities, master planning, and general services for fiscal year 2016.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there discussion? We'll take the vote.
Oh, sorry, mayor.
Did you have...
How many more years left of this contract are we gonna have with them?
Madam Mayor, Councilman, the current contract expires this year, and this is a contract for a new year with Tetra Tech.
Okay, but I'm assuming when all the CSO projects are done, we're not gonna need them to manage our...
Well, that would not be correct, sir.
Okay.
The CSO project has one more element remaining. We are still in negotiation with DEQ for the terms of our permit extension, actually a new permit that we're negotiating at the moment, and we also are negotiating with DOT the nature of the changes that we need to make to their plaza area in terms of the permit and utilities, and Tetra Tech is instrumental in, in doing that. They provided the backup for us for the last 14 years, they, they model our hydraulic system, and they handle our permit applications for this element.
I support them, I think they do a great job, and I think it's imperative that we keep one contractor that's responsible for the project on, on the job, so, just curious how long it was gonna last.
Thank you. We will take the vote.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
Item six.
Is confirming and approving single lot special assessments for the cost of sidewalk replacement in the right-of-way.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ashford, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Harris.
I guess there's one question coming up for you. I only spoke to one person who's on the list of having this, this sidewalk work, work done. How many of these five or six people that had this sidewalk work done, done, done on a voluntary basis, or how many did we have to force to get this done?
Well, sir, I'm not aware of anybody that has their sidewalk repaired on a voluntary basis. This is, the city pays for it if we're notified, we inspect the sidewalk, find that it doesn't meet standards, we send our contractor out to take out and repair, replace the sidewalk, and they get charged.
So these aren't people we had to go, go to court to get...
I'm sorry?
These aren't people that we had to go to court to get their sidewalk repaired?
We haven't had to go to court yet, sir.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. That concludes our regular agenda. Before I open it up, I just want to say this, we had the great, everybody got a copy of this Cranes magazine, and I think, and we were sent by the city manager it online over the weekend. It's really great that we have this article in here, "Blue Water Sparkles." There's lots of good articles. It really paints us in a wonderful picture, that which we are, but sometimes people don't know that. So, and it's just great that this has happened and that we've been recognized. And, you know, I think that we also, I wanted to announce that we're having the SEMCOG, which is Southeastern Michigan Council of Governments, is having their General Assembly up here in Port Huron on the 23rd, a week from Thursday, at the Convention Center. And that's a first. They've never been up here for one of those, and I think it's a great time that people are starting to, to know we're here, and that the drive up here is not that far. So we'll be welcoming officials from all over Southeastern Michigan next week to our communities, so I think that's great. Is there anything from anyone else?
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
I would just like to take the opportunity to thank Ed and his committee, as well as all the others that helped on the excellent job of the Back to the Bricks Car Show. I had the opportunity to meet with many of the owners and, and talk to them, and they had wonderful things to say about you, Ed, and the committee and the organization of the event, and even better and more positive things to say about our city and downtown. And they loved the restaurants, they loved the location, they were very, very positive, so I think that was fantastic for our city, and I am speaking, I'm sure for all of us, that we definitely would welcome them back again. Excellent job.
Yes, Councilmember, oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember, oh, Councilmember Amos.
I would like to just ditto what Sherry said, Councilmember Rep said, Archibald.
One of us.
Just a great week, it was a great weekend to be a resident of Port Huron. You know, we had that Back to the Bricks Car Tour. Citizens for a Vibrant Community did an excellent job putting on the Art on the River Festival, bringing that Veterans Memorial Wall down. The Port Huron branch of the NAACP hosted the State Conference of Michigan's NAACP for all of the state members right here at the city building, which, which was just a beautiful touch to the community, bringing people into our city. Some had never been, so that was just an amazing weekend. And then I just have another item that I just wanted to, just a statement. The last meeting, I made a statement towards Councilwoman Ashford that was a little negative, and I just wanted to openly apologize since I openly said that statement. And so I apologize to you for the way I handled that situation.
I openly accept that apology, and thank you so much. And as a Christian, I didn't hold it against you, because I knew you would come around. So thank you so much, Councilwoman Amos.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Oh, geez.
I'm just getting a chat from all of you. Go ahead. All right, go ahead.
I, I just, I kind of got a question here. Since we become invested in the Blue Water Fest with our donation at the last meeting, a local vendor who participated last year and wants to participate again this year, and the rental rate for his booth is up 100% over last year, and he's having a problem with that, and I said, "Well, I'll bring it up to the council." But I think, I think it's something that we have to look at, you know? This guy's a local business, businessman. He's trying to increase his business by doing some things outside the box. He's, he's a retail outlet, but he's putting a, a stand up there, and it, they're almost making it unaffordable to him, and I don't want to see that happen here, so...
May I ask what the cost was? Do you know?
It was $175 last year, it's $350 this year.
For the three-day event?
Yep.
You said that was for three days?
Yep.
Probably have that passed along to the committee.
It's, it's, it's an interesting concept. He's, he's going to, he's going to pay and, and participate, but he's saying that, he tried to negotiate, he said negotiations weren't available.
You should probably have him talk to Rick Dion. You can give me the name afterwards.
Talk to a lady, I'll find out.
Okay, okay. Yes. Did you?
Yes, just to thank Ed Wesler as well, for stepping up once again, as he has for many, many years, and helping make things happen here in the city of Port Huron. He always has, and I suspect he always will, and thank you directly. I know.
He's pointing. He's pointing.
And I thank all of you, obviously. Better. Thank you.
What?
One of, one of the reasons we keep coming back out of the love of the community is you have a system that works. It's called communication. It's called Carnegie, and to sit and listen to both sides. I wasn't trying to suck up to these guys over here, but John Q. Public should see what they do in the course of the day, and things work on behalf of the community. That's right there, guys.
Thank you, Ed, for saying that. It's true. Councilmember Lewandowski.
I know I always haven't had the nicest words to say for DTE either, but we did get our new LED streetlights in, and I got to say, I do quite enjoy them. They're very bright, light up the neighborhood a lot better than they used to, so whoever designed that did a great job.
They put one outside our house, and it's like, whoa.
It's like stadium lighting.
Yeah. Okay. Councilmember Ashford.
Am I ready? Okay, okay, first of all, I too like to join in on, piggyback on, Ed did a nice job, and I think his communication in ensuring that we're out there, you know, we had opportunity, and actually, we did have another visitor over the weekend, and I'd like to thank the staff, too. We had a gentleman from Dallas, Texas, he was up here on a transfer, and he came to Port Huron, and he said, "Oh, my God." He said, "What do you guys got going up here?" You know, he was so impressed, you wouldn't believe it, you know? And so, we're doing something right, and I just hope it continues. And with that, I actually attended, I was in San Antonio a month ago, and it was a public transit industry, ACTA meeting, and, you know, from people from all over the, the